Purpose of tonight's meeting is to review the budget that's been submitted before we do a complete, final budget.
All the documents are there. I submitted the budget best I could, using what I had at the time. We did have some discussions, have had some discussions in the last few weeks. This is what I had come up with. There's some questions about them, so now anyone who has questions or would like changes. If we want to still have adoption on our next official meeting, which is October 7th, then we would have to have some final answer no later than tonight or tomorrow afternoon, so I can get everything committed.
Bring space, it's needed money.
So that we can have this budget hearing on the 23rd, which would be another special meeting, a public hearing. And then we would have enough time then to go ahead and have our adoption on the 7th. If not, but we still have some time after that. It's just, we have to be adopted by, you know, I think the end of October. So we've got some time, but it may mean more special meetings if we can't get them officially.
Well, I've got some questions because this is, this is new to me and I want to be sure that looking at this correctly and got to educate myself as I go. And this may, as I said, it may be pretty common, maybe elementary, but looking through these numbers some of the past couple of days. There's a, a line item for a deputy mayor of eighteen thousand nine hundred.
That's Amber's, just what we call it.
It's Amber's?
Amber's, his administrative assistant.
So it's part of her salary?
Yeah. It's the general fund portion of it.
You want that position? You want that position?
I don't want to work for you, no. Especially if that number, no, I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, I wondered why it was called a deputy, deputy mayor when it's Amber's.
Could it not be just changed to administrative assistant?
We are going to be contacting State Water County here in the next month or so. Giving them a list of items we'd like to see if we can change and what needs to change, what can be merged, what has to, how the wording has to be on these. That's one of my questions.
I was looking at the general fund dispatchers, fifty-six thousand one sixty. Is that about what we, I know we talked more times about hiring.
We had two part-time, that's what, that's what it was, about twenty-eight thousand dollars a piece. I can't remember. What that.
So you're just leaving the same money in there in that line item, just because in case we fill a position for another part-time, the money's there.
Prior to this year.
It was like thirty, thirty hours a week, I think was what it was.
Twenty-nine hours a week. I think eighteen dollars an hour for fifty-two a week. Twenty-eight eighty is how much it was to be for like a year for each part-time person. Prior to that, that's one of the lines I did have to increase this year because prior to that, it's always been the budget of twenty thousand. So even if we had had two people in there part-time all the time, we would not have been as funded in that. So I did increase it, especially with the possible changes in that position. I'd expect to have.
Yeah.
Have that in there.
I know the chief is pushing hard and they need an administrative assistant in the full-time, which is Mandy right now at part-time. But that was one of the things that I told him, we couldn't do anything after first year, so I could get from the budget there and so. That's why where we're at.
But that is probably something that could be doable. Because you know, we were up here the other night and sometimes they leave at two o'clock in the afternoon and you can't even, you know, you can't get in there to get permits or so. If we hire somebody, if we were hired, it'd be more convenient for citizens.
Right, and we still, and we still need to find someone part-time, I believe. Still, we need to have money in there for some part-time. But we don't have anybody that's really stepping up or, you know, qualified at the time.
So part of that salary, if I remember right, I talked to chief about this when he was wanting to make Mandy, is her name, the full-time?
Amanda.
Amanda. So I don't remember exactly what his number was on the salary, but it was close to that twenty-eight thousand.
Well, no, not, if you go full-time, it won't be, no.
Be higher, much higher? How much?
I don't know what he's wanting to pay. I mean, if you have to say eighteen an hour. Would be almost forty, thirty-seven, almost thirty-eight.
So, but then if, if that's the case, if you had a full-time person then at that salary, you would probably not need twenty-eight thousand for a part-time. Would you? Probably do with less hours, because you wouldn't have somebody working twenty-nine hours part-time, would you?
Well, you're part, well, you figure on a week, if you figure weekends, if you could find somebody, because the full-time's only forty, so that leaves you five eight-hour days. So it leaves you on the weekends and everything goes to the county anyway. I mean, it's not, you know, we're paying everybody else in a year, so.
Well.
Because you got, right now, you got it. You know, we got twenty-eight eight, or twenty-eight.
That's left over in the budget?
Yeah. Because that's for two part-times and we only, we've only had one and that's been, she's been here for a year and hasn't taken a day or anything like that.
Yeah, I just, I think, I think the chief is wanting that and I think it's doable.
Yeah.
Money-wise, I mean, it's not going to, though something as you say concerned.
I would probably, I'd probably look instead of taking the whole twenty-eight out, you know, twenty-eight eight, whatever it is, you know, maybe go half of that, you know.
Okay.
We don't want to cut ourselves short there.
Right. Let me just leave that one alone then. That makes sense. Since it's already been there.
All right. The MBH fund. The page nine.
That's hot, very hot.
The supervisor position, is this a new position?
Yeah, so it, it used to be that way years and years ago and prior administrations, basically when Donnie left, they just threw everything on Bo and Bo's leaving.
Nice, okay.
Well, he's going to retire, but it's, it's too much for, for one person to handle, the water, super, water, wastewater, street, parking wreck. And that was part of the thing with the, with an MBH, with Donnie did with street and then also took care of the parking wreck. And, you know, I'm, I'm just going to say, I mean, I, if, we are very fortunate that Bo has stayed and had, and done what he's done in this and he doesn't do it necessarily for the money, like he says, but people have no idea how much of an asset we have there.
Oh, absolutely.
And the knowledge and he's being, he's being over, over tasked. I mean, he handles it well, but he's here late every single night and he shouldn't have to be.
Well, but are there. Because, you know, this being a new position, I know Bo's leaving down the road. Where we have someone now that's here that could perhaps be promoted, added, you know, kind of added to their responsibilities.
Well, we have.
In, in the department.
We have all new people. Thirteen, thirteen for Alpha Tech.
Bo, do you feel like there's anybody in the department, I don't want to put you on the spot, that you can work with, train to promote from within, to keep morale and instead of bringing somebody?
Can we talk about?
Well, here's what I'd like to do, if you can, I'm sorry. Well, I mean, I, I think.
I think.
Yeah, we used to have that, you know, school person, school personnel get, you know, right, new jobs if they're qualified. Well, what I'd like, because this is, you know, this is kind of, we, we haven't really talked about this too much. I would just, I would, I would like to recommend that we remove that one hundred thousand from the line item. We can leave the money in there and then down the road here, we, it's a, a need that we desperately need to fill, we could come back and do additional appropriations and money would be there, we could approve it then, but.
Well, if you take and move someone up out of that position to this position, you're going to have that money there because it won't be able to come out of. You can pick someone out depending on how it is. So, I mean, it can be taken out, you can do additional appropriations, I don't know how that works itself.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that would be the problem.
But the main thing was just getting the money in there for a provision, cover the benefits and whatever, so.
Well, let me ask this too, because I've been around here long, but I, but I kind of understand, starting to understand how things work better. If we are, if we would hire a new person from outside, are they going to want a vehicle as well, need a vehicle as well later on to?
Those you bring up vehicles, I'm just going to tell you flat out right now, the last, we've only had two vehicles replaced since two thousand three. And the other, and the other vehicle's had a twenty-one years old and they're almost out, road road years.
Yeah.
So we've, we've got to start looking at replacing the vehicles, so. To answer your question point-blank, yes, because when Donnie was here, Donnie had a vehicle, Bo had the vehicle. Did Bernie, did Bernie have the vehicle at that time too?
Yes.
Replaced the Donnie. And I will say this, I mean, Bo takes his, takes it home and I never see it out unless he's out working or something like that. So that's the way it was in the past with, with, when Donnie was there and Bernie and they just going to take it home as either, you know, thought you'd like to please Donnie. Which I don't agree with, or I don't have to either.
I don't agree with either. No, I'm not. The water was plenty, it was, it's not an emergency vehicle. Bust water on, bust in the, bust in the kitchen. All the predators off, they're talking.
Well.
You know, but I get it. I mean, I'm not that way.
A hundred thousand dollars is, a hundred thousand dollars is a good chunk of change. So I would just like, I mean, if I'm saying this right, Lori, you can remove the line item and leave the money there. Is that correct? I mean, leave it in the fund.
It would still be in the, yes.
Yeah. And then after, you know, we talk with Bo, talk with Mayor and it's being a necessity, then we can come back, additional appropriations and do it. Because that, that gives us an opportunity to see, if we hire from within, what we have to do to make that work.
Well, a lot of that depends on, on, you know, with if they've got a family, if they take their family interest, you're looking at twenty-eight thousand dollars for family. So you've got to cover those things that need.
I've got an idea, Xavier.
That, that proves the benefit. That's why, that's why.
I don't know how to calculate.
So, well, if you do the benefits, you're looking at about another thirty thousand. If you do reach, if, if, if it has, if it's a family.
Now, if it's single, it's less than that, yeah.
Kind of a fair way for everybody to follow staff.
And that's probably why I was having, with interest, about eight thousand.
I don't know what, I've got some rounds set with a couple guys wanting to get certified, one for water, one for two. As a manager type of business, I would imagine, human manager, performer, and then the certified departmental or the tour, the DA, the departmental. I was looking at twenty-two, twenty-nine without, if we were to do three different things. Talked about that, I'm just grabbing on.
So do we need to do anything to, recommend we take it off the line item and just leave the funds there?
Well, if it's on the line item, it's not going to be spent until someone's hired, correct?
Right.
Yeah, but I think we need to have some say in this position and what's going to be worked out, because my guess is that it'll go through the board of works position. So I would like for us to have.
You can always deny the wages.
Well, between salary ordinance and salary ordinance, I presume.
Well, at that time.
And we need to.
If nothing happens before January twenty, twenty-five, you'll have to do, well, you can make salary. You could really come across the level too.
And on the salary ordinance, it's next time, I don't kind of jump up there. Lori and I talked about this, instead of having a set wage, we do a starting wage and then an up two, so you don't have to go back and change everything. And with, with a couple people that we have going to the training and, and stuff, we get their licensing, that's part of it in there. And when they get so far, they're supposed to get an increment on that, so that way we don't have to keep changing things, just to get you guys to bring up speed on how that works too. First time after six months, it's like a dollar. I can't remember what the, what's the requirement for the.
I'm not sure there's really a requirement, there had to be some kind of a ministry that came in at the end of the year.
Yeah, something like.
Got that time set in there now. Your minimum salary ordinance, you get one dollar more per hour for each certification. Right now, Ryan has got. Ryan's got a ton of it. He's a team that's. So you can have two years experience.
Yeah.
And Ryan's been here.
Right.
As a, he'll be here three years, I think.
And with the interim program, what they do is they won't account for all their time that they've been here, but they want to give towards your half they give you. They give you so much of it to go towards on the license. After they get through this program.
Well, my feeling is that it gives us a chance to voice opinions on this position that comes to build. So that's just what I would recommend, the money stay there, but not on the line item appropriated till later on, and it's needed to be an additional appropriate. If everybody else is.
No, I can change that.
Do we need to vote on that or is that? Do we need to vote on that or is that just, if those guys agree too?
Not really, it's okay. You tell me what to do, thing.
Also on the MBH, that restricted fund we've talked about a little bit, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. I know you guys have talked to us about some things that, that, what kind of funds can be used for new roads, is that correct?
New roads, only new roads.
Okay. So that could perhaps, I don't know if the mayor has other plans, but develop out some housing development and things, the roads that we're going to have to be responsible for now?
If their subgrade is up to par, we could do that, yes. We've actually got some other roads here that have been down for a long time that haven't had any asphalt put on them. Got a couple like that. We're getting ready to take care of that, but yeah.
Because we're going to be responsible for some, at least I'm hearing, we're responsible for some of the new roads and housing development in the past that we're going to have to take care of.
Yeah, and some of that money was. That's one thing we don't know exactly, what money we had going into there.
Well, I think we may know.
So you may know now.
This, we need to see about you getting that to work.
Okay.
This. This is what we have committed out of the order, country court project. And this is what we have committed more than.
Okay.
That one, that area, which we have worked with, so. We're out of the vote.
Well, and out of that, out of that then, we still have, once we get our redevelopment set up, we're going to pour almost two hundred thousand on there. About additional, I'll have to see if we can get it back towards.
Yeah, plus we get another five hundred and eighty thousand back in there next year, spread out.
Yeah.
It's just going to be kind of tight in there.
Well, and the other part of that is, is that we've got these other developments. I know the one up here. Those, they're, they're going to come to us for a hundred thousand or better. And, you know, if we do the housing develop down and sell that property, you know, you've got that three hundred and fifty thousand that can be put into, to do stuff like that too. So. At least, right now, we don't have anything really going out other than these two projects. We just need to get them done and finished. And I think that number, since it come in under, is probably going to be even more or less.
And the money, country court five is not going to be all at once.
No.
It's going to be spread out over the term of that project. So my question on edit, consulting fees and pre-removal of thirty thousand combined, what's consulting fees?
Number fourteen. Page fourteen.
Is that what, engineers, is that engineering, consulting fees?
Probably.
So is that, okay. That's always been a budget item, I guess.
Yeah, nothing's been spent out of the bishop.
Okay. So you just carry it over. Pre-removal, the same.
Yeah, but we do need to get a couple trees taken down.
While we're on the edit funds here.
About that too. We'll need to add, if we know we're committed to these, then we'll need to, oh, which is funny, we need to add line items to edit for both of those amounts. So that we'll have earmarked and have them set aside for those, so we know then going out.
Country court five and these two, yeah.
For those two amounts that are on there about, so we can add those line items, which, I mean, the money's there. So it's just, like you said, that's how we get earmarked it, so that we know.
Good, that'd be good.
That's for that and it can't be increasing.
Right.
That's what we need to know.
And that's turned out to be a very expensive part.
Very expensive.
What's going to have, with grant money, it's one point two million.
Yeah.
I mean, it's good that they, they got grant money and community foundation and then the city's part was almost half that.
I can, I can tell you this, there was a complete whole set of plans that was going out. I saw the, the renderings on it and everything and we wouldn't have been near what this is.
Yeah. Okay, on, in the edit fund there, economic development projects, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're going to add two lines, so we know exactly what's going to the park over here and country court. This is kind of a large lump sum. Do we know where, where it's going, what?
What it's appropriate.
Yeah.
I don't have any record. I mean, I don't know what it was intended for.
It was always there like that, carried over?
Yeah.
So.
It makes me nervous that it's quarter of a million dollars sitting there and it's not earmarked or something. And, you know, we're all here for economic development, but I liked the fact of putting in lines, we know exactly where this money's going. So I would almost like to do the same thing for this, the two hundred and fifty thousand, leave it in edit fund, obviously. Unless we know where it's going to go, do a particular line item. If not, I'd just like to leave that, just like the last one, leave the money there. Not appropriate it for a line item and then as needed, they can come to council and we can do additional appropriations as well. I just.
Well, that, that's where you can use that money on these housing projects too.
And then, you know, that would be something with, you know, I just.
The other part of that is, you know, we're doing this redevelopment commission, you can pay for that out there too.
Yeah, it's a bonus.
Yeah. And, and that, that, that's fine. I just, this makes me nervous with that money laying around and it can be spent somewhere and without, you know, council really knowing where it's going, so to make sense to leave it there, but then take it out of the line item and then as needed, we just do additional appropriations and the council would then know where it's going and have the.
Checks and balances?
Yes. I'd, I'd like to recommend we do that as well. But.
You guys afraid I'm going to spend that?
Don't you want us to answer that question?
This way.
Hey, if you go back to what I, what I say, we're, we're in a position where we do got to, we, we will have to start reinvesting in the city and we're going to have to do some things. Especially with all these projects, we've got to have that money in there and it's good to have it in there. And we don't want to, we don't want to run it both, but I think there's a lot of other creative ways that we can help out on some of these housing projects that I'm going to talk to Bo about. And that's, you know, he wants to do this and that, but if we can help with the pipes and stuff like that as far as.
Yeah.
You know, there's, there's a lot of creative things we need to be looking at, but the bottom line is, is we want to be fiscally responsible too.
Hundred percent. Yeah, you know, then I saw one, why are, and some of these are small amounts, but it all adds up. Two thousand dollars on investments. Why are, what are we paying to invest or what? Is that, does something, has always been there or?
Yeah, it's there, it was there. So I, like I said, a lot of this was carryover from a prior budget because I wasn't sure exactly what all, like it has not been, let me double check. It has not been used this year for anything, so, you know.
These are just line item, budget items that was created and just in case.
They were created at some point in time for some reason and they still had.
I thought the idea of investments is to get money back. Yeah, I mean, I'd be curious where that originated from, but, but then, and again, some of these are small amounts and I'm not going to be here all night nitpicking, but seven thousand dollars for city promotion.
That is for like when we buy ads in the school for school programs. The things like that, I mean, things to.
But I figured.
You know, it's handy for the, the parade, it's that sort, I mean, it's things to promote the city as far as those odds and ends like that.
Like the advertising and so.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's. Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, it's our goodwill kind of thing, too, you know, we buy candy, we buy some parades, we, we buy ads and, and programs and that sort of stuff to help the city.
And that, like on the NBA, you've got street labor wages, that's just wages for our workers, correct?
Our, our workers, our, our people are paid out of a whole lot of different pots, and some of us are paid out of, individually out of different pots. So, wages everywhere.
On the, uh, school bond payments.
That'll be the final one.
Which, which one will be?
Next year, January, it's one more, one last bond payment, and we're done.
So, that's gonna, so, okay, so that, we won't have that twenty-seven thousand going out there.
Yep, that twenty-seven thousand, we'll go, we'll pay it next year, and then we're, we're done with that.
That's another twenty-seven thousand basically back in the year.
Well, our records are showing that, that we'll have one more payment.
How, how old is that ladder?
I kinda wondered he was on fifteen years.
Gonna get out of it.
Yeah.
Fifteen, about fifteen.
Fifteen?
Fifteen, if you're lucky, you can get a few more than that.
Well, uh, we, we gotta, what's the dollar amount for something like that ballpark?
Twenty-seven's not gonna catch it.
Right, well, what I, what I'm, what I'm saying is.
You're probably double that, it's, uh, it's not more.
Well, here, you know, well, Brian, we've talked about this, and I know we're all on the same page on this. You know, I don't want us to be sitting up here some night, Bo comes and says, I need a hundred thousand dollars for a pool line, and we've talked about plan for this year, three years, five years, and that's meeting with these guys and, and putting pen to paper, and writing it out, looking at it, so we can budget and plan every year, and, you know, we've talked about this, and something that, this is our first, my first budget, so after this, like I said, start heading that direction, and putting pen to paper, and putting plans and vision, yeah, absolutely.
I mean, here we are, literally twenty-one years later, and we, and we got vehicles that weren't, you know, during last administration, here we are, we seriously, we're three bucks.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're gonna, uh, just go, go another iron or a pipe and, uh, spokes. We're gonna have a, uh, gonna have to have a new, uh, fire truck, one of these days. And we're talking big much.
Probably have a lot of fish fry.
Seven hundred and fifty million dollars probably for, for.
How much?
That'll be.
No.
On a new engine and stuff, it'll be close to seven fifty, about one point five million. Ladder truck.
I mean, Eric, you're look, I mean, what, what, I mean, you're envisioning how far down the road?
Yeah, well, right now, we're repairing a lot on our engine, we're doing what we can, because we are. Um, I feel engine two should've been replaced a long time ago, but I would keep engine two over engine one, because the stuff on those things, I hate. All the electronics, we didn't really need a six cab. If it was a four cab, six cab is nice, don't get me wrong, four cab would probably benefit us. We can try to get one spec'd out pretty plain and simple, you know, stuff we really need. Um, I don't think we're gonna get under five, under that, five thousand, no.
Are there grants and things of that nature, cities can apply forward again?
That we're competing with a lot. Um, not only that, but, I mean, our air packs are, I don't wanna say how old they are, uh, they're very old, uh, we're still in the first generation, you know, there's second, thirds out there now, uh, we're in the Firehawk, the G ones out there now, and you're looking at, um, you're looking about, uh, anywhere between seventy-five, eight thousand for a whole pack. That's just one, and that's, I think we can get the massive two bottles.
See, I mean, I, I, I see you coming, you know, it's a board of works meetings, and you know, kinda ask, you know, needing this, needing this, needing this, and it, and it always seems to be, uh, I, I mean, it's almost like you're begging for it, you know, I mean, that, because it's needed, I'm not, you know, uh, like Brian and I were saying, you know, I'd like you, you know, to have a plan for this year, two or three years, so when these packs or things run out, you can come say, hey, it's in the budget, we need it, we budgeted for it, you can get them, so you don't have to always be worrying and you get the money to do it, you know what I'm saying?
And I have, I had my guys, like, we, matter of fact, I brought some things, we budgeted, because we have to host that every year, we gotta bump test every year. Uh, our trucks need to be serviced every year, you know, we just started all that, we just now got tires, we know every seven years we have to replace tires. Turnout goes every ten years, so I have all that in place, it's all the other little stuff that I'm, I'm working on as well. Um, this time I get ready to work on something, we gotta fix this thing, you know, uh, our ladder truck passed certain areas, but we have to, there's certain things we have to do, I mean, we could use it, we just have to weld the big one, and I got, we got certified welder, wanna take care of it, our tanker, uh, the grant is still out there, that's what ladies did, uh, for FEMA grant, so we're still waiting on it, it's not hurting anything. Bad news, I would say, but, uh, we do have somebody that's gonna fix our tanker, uh, they're gonna modify it, uh, matter of fact, it's probably gonna cost about under two thousand dollars to, to do what they wanna do, and that's, got it, put a new weld on it, a new chute on it, everything. So, we've, and what's helping us is, I've got guys that know guys that know how to weld, and they're like, hey, we'll catch your break, so that's the benefit we have in the fire department, uh, and everything, um, Logan Dan knows a lot of people, you know, I mean, he's a very big asset, Ethan knows a lot of people, so, um, and we have others that do, but like I said, we, we got our trailer stakes, uh, it was like eight hundred dollars, I think, we had a promenade track, um, so there's, there's, there's things up there, you know, Big John has been a big asset, helping us out, helping with parades and stuff, you know, deal, uh, so, uh, but when it comes down to it, we can write a grant for a truck, and we might have to turn around and write a grant for, um, air packs. Ladies Auxiliary's helping out a lot, they're helping write a lot of grants, too, and they were able to get us some, uh, grant money for radios, and maybe have the, you know, broke out just not quite half, but a little bit more of it, but, um, so they're doing a lot, and, you know, we do have the education grant out there, so hopefully we can get it all, we'll have to.
Yeah.
When you write for these grants, is it all one pool for, no matter what size the city population is, or are they broken down?
Um, as far as the FEMA grants, I mean, it's.
Any grant?
Well, the market kind of, community foundations is the one they do a lot of it on, so that's, we're good with on that one, but as far as the FEMA, it's, it's wide.
It's open for.
Oh, yeah.
But, you know, like Bo was saying the other night at the meeting, you know, he's got some equipment out there, it's fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years old, now, it's you know, he's had, the other time, again, now's the point he can't, so, you know, this guy here the other night, seventeen thousand dollars, just, uh, tell us what they think we need, I got more faith than Bo telling us what we need than, uh, this company, uh, but, we're gonna pay them seventeen thousand for that, then turn around and pay them. And I know, it, it, it just happens, and we'll have to make it work, but, you know, I like, you know, to plan ahead for these type of things.
Right, and, and that's, that's, that is my goal when I first, when I first got in here, it's like, I don't wanna come here and say, hey, I need fifty thousand dollars for this, I need this, I need that. My goal was to come and say, hey, I need to replace hose, and I don't wanna replace all my hose at once, so I'm looking at eight percent a year. Yeah, four to six thousand dollars may seem like a lot, but in eight years, I'll have it replaced, and we've got two years we don't have to mess with it, you know, just like with our turnout here, you know? Um, in October, we're gonna start measuring, I, I need five sets, we're looking at about twenty thousand. So, we're good for another next year, and then after one, I think one more year, then we're good for like five and a half years from the first set we did.
And this is where we gotta still make sure we put money back in the budget for that, you know, and, and it goes back like you said a minute ago, Coach, it seems like they're always coming asking, I mean, those tires, those tires have never been replaced on that truck.
I didn't want to come and replace all trucks at once, I wanna replace trucks here and there through the time, but I couldn't wait, they were all outdated, so we had to replace them all at once.
I mean, I feel bad with you guys, you know, because it's almost like you guys don't wanna, I mean, I feel bad, you gotta come, and.
Well, here, here's the.
Maybe can already be there.
Here's the sad thing about it is, that's public safety.
Hundred percent.
And, these, you can't put a price on that exactly, Mike, but, but the thing of it is, no one's ever taking care of what needs to be taken care of, and we, and we're left to do that, because, you know, when you get on that phone, you call nine-one-one, you wanna make sure someone's gonna be here. And you don't wanna have anybody have a wreck on the way, because you got bad tires, and your equipment's not working.
So it makes sense then.
Do what we had to do this year.
So it makes sense as department heads to develop one, two, three, five-year plans, and try to budget accordingly?
Especially on the big ticket items like that, I mean, things like that, you know, uh, truck, hoses, uh, air packs, tires, you know, stuff like, and here, and T P E, stuff like that, we need to.
If we can get that in the budget, then you wouldn't have to come, like Dave Smith says, come to the meetings, and, because it's already in your budget.
Right.
And then, if there's a necessary additional appropriation that can be dealt with, but if you're planning and strategizing, knowing what the cost is gonna be, get it budgeted in, that would make more sense, it sure would take a lot of pressure off you guys.
And if I'm right or wrong, it's like, the lit, the lit fund now.
Lit?
Yeah. That money's, part of that's for police and, and fire and state, state exactly. Okay, so there's money in the, in those funds, I see, so.
Your lit is basically your edit fund now, or edit is basically lit, or you're low it.
Both of those make up for it, it's editing, public.
There's a little bit, it seems to be a little bit of money in, if I'm looking at it right.
And so the additional, when they created edit, it was pretty restricted, now it's not, right? Pretty much you can do, yeah.
Unless it's flat item, and then.
Right, I mean, well, it used to be restricted for a certain area, then they said, okay, just. So, did you build the three percent in, in its budget for?
Four.
The three percent, we talked about, was that?
Raises, not in this one yet, but that was given to me after I already had all this.
That doesn't require salary ordinance, does it?
Well, the salary ordinance will come, you've, I mean, it's coming next, you, you just, it, but it won't affect this year's salary ordinance, we will have to pass another sal- salary ordinance. I, it's still, yeah, it's like November, maybe, by November or by December. And you can, yeah, you can change it, and so we have to interview, so, um, but that's better to kind of know what we're doing before we just, I mean.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's been nothing that, that I know that's coming for the council on raises or anything, so, yeah, right.
And I know they would like to have raises, you know, it's always good to get raises and say you'd like.
When we came in, we gave, to the what was given previous.
And the thing of it is, is that, like, a lot of, most, your bigger, bigger cities, uh, you know, like Lori mentioned earlier, you know, the wages come out of water, wastewater, street, park, and wreck, uh, yeah, I mean, so it's, it's a little bit out of everybody, every department, so, and when you look, it gets you the hardest, yeah.
And since they, most of your people don't come out of, yeah.
And, and it's like.
Most of yours are yours, I mean, it's yours, yours, yours.
Yeah, I just, I just took whatever I was firmly making, and for what they will be making at the one-year anniversary, somehow they're far out of June, going in figures into the year. At three percent rate, paying increase, and I suppose, right, kind of, I don't know.
And it, and it's like when we re, redid the, uh, salary ordinance this year, you know, when we had a new hire, working in waters, in wastewater, eighty percent of their wages for the first three months were coming out of the council budget. They had no fun, you know, so. Yeah, but we redistributed that through the water and wastewater and, and, and stuff like that, so.
I know when we done the salary ordinance in March, we did it for a couple of reasons, to make us competitive with municipalities our size, and we could retain our people, not losing and have to retrain, because it costs more money to retrain and develop people, especially with the police department. Yes, so I don't have a problem with the three percent, uh, it's part of an enticement to keep people.
Well, the other thing we did, we put in the, uh, longevity pay, too.
Right, but you're, you're investing in your employees, they're, they're working people, too, and they're experiencing the, uh, the inflation and stuff, so it's not their fault.
Well, it goes back, we lost two hundred and seventy or eighty thousand dollars over the three years, just in, in the police training and stuff alone. And that's basically ninety thousand dollars a year we're throwing out the, out the door.
So the general picture, looking at this, and maybe Lori, maybe Kim can answer this, I don't know, uh, financially, things are okay, they're not horrible, they're not super duper, but they're not.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah.
Well, I'd just like to say, Kim, I appreciate everything that you've been helping out and doing, because I know it's been a, you know, here we are just into our first, you know, uh, uh, nine months, and, uh, appreciate you, you helping out and, and getting things, figuring out where we're at, because we had no idea where we were at. And we really haven't found that out until just here recently, I believe, of what we actually had, you know, I've been talking to Lori, and, and I know it's been a, a, uh, painstaking event, you know, trying to get, get to where we're at, and I, and I do appreciate that greatly, because it's kind of set us as a city in a lot better position to know where we're at, what we can do, what we can't do, and what we need to do.
Yeah, very much appreciated.
I don't know, I never hear that word.
Very overwhelmed, had not, had.
I go to Lori, and I say, what do we have here, I really don't know yet, right?
I don't know yet, I don't know yet.
Figure it out, figure it out. I think it was last, two weeks ago, I went in, I said, what do we have here, because I could tell you, I was like, okay, good.
I would be, be fair to say that Kim's asset to you was something that was probably not done in the last four, five years here, it was more of, let's stick it to the council and the mayor, it was never try to work together for the city. And I, I know we're live here, but that's just kind of the way I view it, so I do appreciate it, Kim.
Absolutely.
I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. We certainly, uh. He's spanned up. Well, actually, it gives us an idea, and, and, you know, we know a much better understanding where we are, what we have, what we don't have, we can look at our needs and, and fund those, and work with these guys, the chief, and get plans together. We can look at our needs and, and fund those and work with these guys, the chief, and get plans together and go from there.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
What else you need from us? He just has to sign that, we don't have to prove that, because money's already there.
I'll put this on later here.
Yeah, he's gonna want to let her know.
But that money's already there, it was already appropriated, so.
And. Yeah, I mean, are we good with? As long as I am trying to do that calendar across, I'm not gonna see it. Um, the day to the eleventh, as long as I have it in the, by the, the twelfth, we can have it the twenty-third, is that right? Okay, so tomorrow I'll get this all redone, um, and we will have a, our public hearing on Monday, the twenty-third. Um. At six o'clock, um, you know, if that just works, they're with you guys in the normal, not the normal time we do these meetings. Um, and the public hearing, and then. On the seventh, on our regular meeting, on October seventh, we can have our adoption on that day. And. I will hopefully have the salary and wage ordinance. At one of those two days, for you guys to at least have eyes on. So, Dave, first for everybody.
Yeah, just, just to make a note that. The next, uh, city council meeting would be on. The first Monday of the month instead of the second Monday, which is October seventh, instead of the fourteenth.
It's gonna be the second Tuesday because Monday's holiday. But the second Monday, but they moved it to the second Tuesday, now we're moving it to the first Monday.
October seventh?
October seventh.
Seven, seven, ready city council. Twenty-third is a special meeting.
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah. Yeah, we need to form both nights, we do not, yeah. So if you know there's something and we need to change it, then. If we do have some time, I mean, we could do the budget hearing at the next scheduled meeting and then do the budget adoption. Two weeks later, if we want, you know.
I think this works out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd rather we do it a little earlier, have it, have it in place instead of have to scramble.
Then we'll get the salary ordinance possibly adopted, either one.
No further. Yeah, but it's coming from the end, that.
It's different. The, the D-bus. You know, you can throw up and slam. We do, our portion.
Yeah.
But it did. Did this, screw up on Elm Street, which is not awesome. And then we had to, more of that.
Yeah, we need to use the, I don't know if it's possible, I know you hate to talk.
I do. That, both of those, my, this, that, this, and that. Shoot off the hip, like, we think five, nine, twelve, it's a lot of it.
Fire station?
I'll give you three, then I'll send you.
I'll say five to eight.
So this bring you up to speed here.
We got the money in the asphalt, so.
The money's there, but I don't know the monster I grew up with, and stuff that's not valid. Elm Street, when we applied for the grant, they had milling and paving. On a surface that there is no asphalt. To the Elm Street running back behind the Murphy home, stops, the asphalt stops, and we're trying to travel. We proposed to do asphalt all the way through. Through six hundred feet, focusing on five hundred and eighty feet, that there won't be milling on. We don't get, the milling is charged, uh, by that, not by the.
It's a flat fee for it, every day, to run that mill, but it's a flat, flat fee every day, it costs you no matter what you get milled or what you haul off.
One of the mountains is. There's no road base or other than travel. It's gonna be, there's gonna need to be grading, fact, and then just letting three and a half inches of dirt. So the D-bus, I have no intention of turning it to Midwest, if we change orders, is, is, it's work that hasn't been done. And the project, there's a plan to do. Some of the sidewalk ADA approaches, they've already done, but we're not gonna do them. Anyway, it's about thirty-five thousand, so our portion of that was eighty-seven fifty, which is gonna be a D-bus item. Our, our twenty-five percent. To recognize problems down the street, with ten thousand three hundred fifty with exposure. It's gonna cost us a little more to get it done right, or not do it with that portion at all.
What do you recommend? We're looking at about nineteen thousand.
Eighty-seven hundred dollars, and it's only ten, so you're only looking at a couple thousand dollars more than.
Yeah, well, I've got that figured out here in mind. Um, we discussed doing those two community crossings, Grant, so it's, cannot include new roads. So Bridgewater has never been a road, but it's never had asphalt. Uh. Something contractor getting a proposal to put asphalt down on Bridgewater and to make it all look nice, nice and uniform. Not with highs, Jackson, highs into Jackson, Jackson, highs into Lincoln. Twenty-three, five-eight. Twenty-three thousand five hundred and fifty. Which is total of thirty-two thousand nine hundred five dollars, get back to eighty-seven fifty that we're gonna get back. Not twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty.
Is the money's there?
Money's there, the only reason I'm bringing it up now is because the contractors will be in and out of here before next year. And if you do it, if you do it now. That's what a fee, that's what the cost is, if you do it later, you call them back in, you're gonna need to.
And part of that is we, in front, in front of the fire station out there on South Side, that whole pad from the road, which is gonna be redone.
Very chill.
Fifteen, fifteen feet in and nineteen.
Fifteen feet wide and seventy-five foot long.
That is all broke up, broken down, it needs to be ripped out and put in asphalt. And so.
We part of the asphalt, we part of the concrete.
Well, if you think it needs to be done, the money's there, I mean.
Well, it needs to be done, it does, we, we talked about it and stuff, and we was trying to figure out. They're just doing roads, but if you're right there, it shouldn't cost us that, it shouldn't cost that much more, that's what, I figured five to eight thousand on that area.
Yeah, so what about the, what their plan is, if we add. If we do the change order, they'll go ahead and do it on. Proper. With the addition of Bridgewater Jackson, they're gonna finish this job, so there's no conflict, they're gonna go handle, do the job, and tell them the bird was. Come back. To do Bridgewater Jackson, I'm not probably doing that either. Do the South Side fire station as well, and that's the work that's out there there. Which, if they don't want, make it look like done, same project, we can take it for our community project. We could lose y'all if we need to get some people around, they would get kicked out of the program, probably.
So you need anything to mess on that, or?
Well, I just wanted to get you guys to sign off on that for the financial side of it, so. And the thing about it is, is a lot of people overlay concrete, but you overlay concrete, every spot that you have a track. It's gonna get a reflective track too, and you're gonna be right back to soil one. So it's, so the concrete's gonna have to get ripped out, which we can do that. We got time. The money's there.
So it doesn't get changed, if I really know. Yeah, do you think this is the FYI, so you know this company, and I don't wanna go ahead and authorize it, I don't want to run it, probably. If you say it's okay, it's getting done. Yeah, did you talk to him about, uh, fall break, the Butcher Boulevard and, uh?
Well, here, here's, here's what, I talked to Dr. Harmon today. Uh, do they have a timetable when they plan to do Butcher Boulevard?
I spoke to the foreman, the job chief, and then today, and of course, Monday every week. And I took him up to the timetable.
If it would be possible, uh, not.
The milling, what, what their intentions are, because they're using the same trucks. To haul the milling away as the same trucks that bring the hot asphalt in. So they're not, they don't, you know what I'm saying, they're using the same equipment.
Well, let me ask, if they can't, if they can't wait to fall break, can they go, can they do it on a Saturday, or are they working Saturdays?
Well, what I talked to him about today, that it's not really gonna be that big a conflict. I'm milling, so they're gonna go through and fill everything, and one lane open all the time.
Okay.
Yeah, I made it over a bad grid, but I'd rather it's that everybody knows it's getting mad now.
Yeah, well, I mean, because.
And it won't take, once they get going, I mean, if they come in, say they start right after school starts. Doesn't take long to mill the road. They get down, get trucks out.
Milling will be done.
You know.
Between entry and exit.
As far as paving, once they start putting, run that paper, it won't take long to put it down either.
It, everything will be done during school hours, and it should not interfere with coming in.
Okay, well, that, yeah, because, I mean. We all know there's a great deal of cars that go up there in the morning, drop off kids at the elementary, kids driving the buses. Uh, I just didn't want that to be a headache and then winding up down here at the mayor's office, because I mean, there's gonna be people upset.
Eight, starting at eight. Eight-thirty and being done, you know, probably like two o'clock in the afternoon or something like that.
I mean, yeah, as long as people, and.
It's not gonna be ideal, they have, they have a crash on the hot out as well.
Yeah. Can you, uh, maybe touch base with, uh, John Neiderver up there at the school, okay?
Did you talk to Jason yet? About, yeah. Explain to him, you know, he's walked about here.
So John's, okay. Just like, gotta play it. Yeah, and somebody asked me today too, will they be able to get to their house up there, what's that, how's it? Yeah, yeah.
They don't have any options, but they drive here.
Right, yeah.
And, and that's the problem.
Yeah.
Is, if they drive to the hot asphalt or the path that they put down, you know, their car, it ain't our problem.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sorry, but.
It's hard to be off the vehicle too, it's pretty long.
I don't wanna be a jerk about it, but the fact of the matter is, we've given these people enough time, and I know that there's really no alternative. Those people could park and just do parking lot calls, I believe. Can't say they could park on Brooks Avenue, because Brooks Avenue pays also.
Yeah.
Well, there's, there's gonna be a time though, that when they're putting that asphalt down before it has been rolled, they're not gonna be able to cross it. That way, they'll, they've gotta stay off of it.
Still have, still have, like, still have people who, who, wow, that's, yeah, they focus on.
Yeah, yeah, I just.
It's not good to have heavy trucks on it, but.
Right.
It is what it is.
One other thing I like to go up, go down there, we probably need to put barricades and stuff, that's been all dug out. All right, all right, I'll ask for motions of adjournment.
I'll make it.
I got it.
I'll tell you.
I don't have a game plan on what they're, uh.